Based organization comprised of unions, civic organizations, individuals, faith communities, and our mission is to basically address the economic, environmental, civil, and social rights of working people, their families, and the communities that they live in, and the ecological systems that sustain us. So that's who we are. I just want to thank the Mennonite Church for hosting us. They're always really gracious folks and allowing us to use their space. I want to thank, of course, our candidates for coming in tonight, spending their evening with us, and packing in so tightly here. And I want to thank, you know, all you folks from the community that came out to hear what they had to say, so thank you very much. If you haven't already gotten acquainted with the space, of course, there is food and drink out there, so help yourself. There's a bathroom right across the hall there, and there's even one down at the end of the hall if that one's occupied. So if you need to take a potty break at any point, go to one of those two directions there. I also just want to remind everybody before we get started, the Alachua County Labor Coalition is a 501(c)(4). We do not endorse candidates, and we have strived throughout this process to treat everyone fairly. A few weeks ago, just to kind of give you a little background on our process, we sent out candidate questionnaires to all the candidates, everyone that was running. Those responses, in their entirety, are posted on our website. So obviously, we're going to have to, you know, be succinct this evening, but if you want to read everything that folks had to say, you can read their responses to our questionnaires on our website. We invited every candidate who completed a response by the deadline to attend the forum. And we also have, you know, as you might imagine, still a number of folks who are not incredibly comfortable with in-person events in a space like this. That's why we're asking folks to wear masks. And that's also why we're recording the event tonight, and we will be posting the recording online after the event is over tonight. So basically, just a quick overview of the overall format. We're going to ask each candidate to introduce themselves. We'll ask you to keep your introduction to one minute. After that, we will ask them questions about issues of importance to our membership. If you could keep the responses to those questions, two minutes per response, that would be really appreciated, and depending on how succinct everybody is, we'll see how many questions we can get through this evening. Sheila will be there, helping you all keep time, so keep an eye on her, and she'll tell you when your time is getting near. We've also invited folks that are here tonight to submit questions, okay? So if you would like to submit a question, Bobby will be kind of walking around the room tonight, collecting your note cards, and he'll be interjecting between some of the questions that I'm going to ask with some audience questions, okay? So feel free to send those over to Bobby. Finally, I do want to let you know about a couple of other events that we have coming up this month, and somebody can correct me on dates if I'm wrong here, but on the 28th, so two weeks from tonight, we will have our mayoral candidate forum. Obviously, we couldn't get everybody all together for one night, so we're going to do the mayoral forum separately, but we'll be here, same basic format, same space, food and drink at 6:00, starting at 6:30 on the 28th. And then, two days later, on the 30th, we will be celebrating the birthday of Medicare and Medicaid. It's a really amazing program, I'm sure many of you know, that has saved lives and reduced poverty for decades in this country, and we like to get together once a year and celebrate its birthday. So we'll be at Cypress and Grove Brewery on the 30th, starting at 6:00 PM, and we'll have a little part of that inside, where Representative Yvonne Hinson Hayes will be there, and Chad, one of our board members, Chad Hood, Dr. Chad Hood, will be there, be talking about Medicare and Medicaid, and then after that, we'll kind of move the party outside, and we'll have birthday cake, and it'll be a good time. So please join us for those two events if you're available, and help spread the word. Again, we are laborcoalition.org, and we also have a presence on social media if you want to check us out that way for any folks that are new. All right, anything that I left out? Other board members? You good?
I've decided that on social media, our handle is simply Labor Coalition. No space, no Alachua, just Labor Coalition.
All right, so we'll get started, and what we're going to do is we'll just start at this end of the table with introductions, and then for each question, we'll kind of stagger it, and the next person will go first, if that sounds okay. So James Ingle, you get to go first.
Hey, my name's James Ingle, running for Gainesville City Commission District 2. And a little bit about me, I'm running because I am tired of seeing people in Gainesville struggle. Gainesville is a great place to live, it is a hard place to earn a living, and I think we need to change that. I think the way we start to look at changing that is getting a voice on a city commission that's really got a history and understands, you know, the issues that working people are facing in this community. You know, I come from a working-class background, I've got a lot of experience building coalitions in the community here to face everything, from wage theft to housing discrimination. You know, working with the Alachua County Labor Coalition, we've managed to make a lot of gains for working people. We need to continue that, we need to put a pair of work boots on the city commission. As I said, Gainesville's a great place to live. We can all see where it needs to be better. I really look forward to being part of what makes that happen. I'm James Ingle, running for Gainesville City Commission District 2.
I'm Casey Willetts, I'm running for Gainesville City Commission District 3, which is most of southwest Gainesville. The story of my adult life has been about being involved, about when people ask me, hey, will you help? Can you do this? Can you join us? Will you do this? I just keep on saying, yes, I'll do that, yes, I'll do that. And it led me through being involved from the very beginning as a young high schooler, starting the first gay straight alliance in the state of Arkansas where I grew up, to working on campaigns like President Obama's campaign twice, to working for statewide LGP rights organizations like Equality Florida and a couple of other ones in the South, to getting to here to Gainesville, and being involved in progressive campaigns and issues, most recently starting as the founding steering committee of a new union on campus, United Campus Workers. And it just led me to the point of, you know, people asking, will you be involved? Will you help? And this time around, I said, am I going to step in? Will I help? And I said, you know what? Yes, yes, I will. And I'm running because the southwest district, particularly District 3, gets ignored too often. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Brian Eastman, I'm running for Gainesville City Commission District 4. You're right in the heart of City Commission District 4, it runs from Valdo Road to 34th University up to 16th, and then touches some of the northern neighborhoods. And I'm running because I want to leave a more sustainable, equitable, and vibrant city for my daughter. We all love Gainesville, Gainesville's a really great place to live. We need to make sure that we are building something better. I think we've come out of a very hard time in our city through the pandemic and political divisiveness. I think it's time that our next chapter needs to be brighter. We need to be making sure that we are investing in renewable energy, protecting our green spaces. We need to be ensuring that we're investing in our arts and music, culture, and downtown, the stuff that we like about Gainesville, and ensuring that we're dealing with our homelessness issues. I'm the vice chair for Grace Marketplace, our homeless shelter. Would like to see us expand some of the services out there and make sure that we have a brighter future for our children. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Patrick O'Ingle, and I'm running for District 3 City Commissioner. I ran for the Lord Chief, was defeated back in last November, I'm running for my own district for District 3. The same platform of making Gainesville more affordable and business-friendly for all residents in there. I come from, the city commissioner is into that position, we don't need to have the experience like a mayor does, but we do need to have the dedication and the commitment to serve the people without recognition or any type of frankness with that. I bring to the city as a, from my software development experience, I've been working over the last 20, so 30 years, to bring advanced technologies to the city to make it streamlined more operation. My engineering background will help me eliminate waste, and my experience as educator, being a former teacher, I can also, for instance, help explain this to others. You can read on my website.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Ed Book, I'm running for Gainesville City Commission District 2, which is primarily west and northwest Gainesville. Thanks to the Mennonite Church and also the Alachua County Labor Coalition for having us. I've lived in Gainesville a long time. My wife is a public school teacher, my son is a nurse, and I'm a police officer and adjunct instructor at Santa Fe College. So what do I believe in? First, I start with civility, treating people with professionalism, respect, and courtesy. I support core services like good roads, vibrant parks and recreation, which as I've heard mentioned a couple of times, and I think that it's really important that we address those that are most in need and in poverty. So I would like to get things done, I hope you'll support me, I promise to do an excellent job, and if I do gain your vote, I can tell you'll be proud of it two to three years later. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Graburn, I am running for Gainesville City Commission District 2 as well. My primary job, I'm the pastor of the Gainesville Vineyard, the director of the GMV Bridge Community Center, where we provide a week's worth of groceries to 1,000 people a month in southeast Gainesville. We also have a literacy program where we help close the disparity gap, teaching third graders and second graders to read at grade level. We have a community garden as well, and in community space that we share widely. I'm also the board chair of Grace Marketplace and participate in that work. I ran a homeless shelter in Raleigh for a while before we moved here, thanks. And I am a member of the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. My concerns are, one, city government doesn't listen very well, we need to increase our democratic listening so everyone's voices are heard, and all affected parties have a seat at the table. I think our infrastructure is crumbling, the fire department needs funding, the roads are in bad shape, the traffic lights don't work very well, and the economy has to grow in ways that are not dependent on UF, there aren't enough jobs in this town, there aren't enough good jobs in this town. And those would be my focuses if elected. Thank you.
Well, my name's Dejean Kane, I'm so proud to be here, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to say that I'm an AGH baby, I'm from Gainesville, Florida. My involvement in this great place is, I'm the chair of the Alachua County Affordable Housing, I've been the chair for 10 years, I'm still continuing that journey. Also, I'm currently the chair of the EEO Board for the city of Gainesville, and I'm proud of that. I've been on the plan board, while places in public spaces with the county. You know, here in Gainesville, I find that we elect people all the time, but we got to elect people that's from Gainesville, Florida, that understand what's going on, what's going on with our infrastructure, what's going on with our communities, that understand that the people in our communities are hurting, and we need to start listening, and we need to start fighting. So I would ask for your vote on August the 23rd, and thank you very much.
Which district?
District 3.
You can hold on to the mic, we'll go ahead and let you start for the next question. All right, so this is our first question. As many of you know, the Labor Coalition has been a longtime advocate for a living wage, and we focused our campaigns on city workers, county workers, UF, Santa Fe, those sorts of things. So our first question, of course, is about living wages and benefits. It's a two-part question. First off, we just want to know if you support the provision of living wages and benefits for all city workers and contracted employees regardless of their status as part-time or temporary? Secondly, we're particularly concerned with health care. Many of our part-time workers at the city and temp workers are not able to afford health care for their dependents and their partners. So what would you do to help make sure that those folks are covered by the insurance program as part of their benefits? Please try to be as specific as you can.
All right, got you. So the first question is, yes, I do support that. I believe that we must have it equal all around the board for everyone. That is very important. Actually, I was a part of a union when I was at the University of Florida Police Department, and I was very active in that union. The second question, yes, we do need to make that affordable, and we need to find ways by working with the unions. Also, being a commissioner, you'll work with the commission, and just whatever organizations that we have to make sure that that happens. It's important that they're able to get good health care, and that we sit down at the table and we find ways. So I'm willing to sit down, I'm willing to learn, but to know that we do need that, and we do need to expand that for those that don't have it, that are part-timers as well. Thank you.
Just me? Okay. I do support that move for city workers, and more than that, it can, the case can be made more broadly. As part of my PhD in ethics and public policy at Duke, I was a researcher at the University of Kentucky, the I-Win Workplace Initiative Program, and my specific area of focus was just in time scheduling and trying to convince employers that paying people a living wage and letting them work a consistent schedule was actually more efficient and more productive, and we can make that case. So we can go even beyond the city to other local employers and help them understand that it's in their best interest as employers to pay their employees a living wage. The research supports that. So yes, I would support that. In terms of benefits, that's really difficult. I was talking to Fire and Rescue a couple of weeks ago, they can't afford their insurance either. Family of four, and our Fire and Rescue Department's $800 a month out of their pocket premium, they can't afford that. I don't know what the specific solution is, but we need to like buy insurance in the biggest group we can, and so maybe we can partner with UF and Santa Fe and the city employees and the county employees. We have to broaden, you know, who's all included in the policies. I know my daughter's a cancer researcher at UF, they have really good insurance, and her rate is about half of what the Fire and Rescue's rate is. So I don't know, I mean, obviously bundling is one way you save on insurance, it's not affordable for anyone, but I would be in favor of exploring like what are the, what ways can we innovate to try to bring that down, because that has to be a major concern, because it's difficult on everyone out there.
That's very good. Again, my name is Ed Book for District 2, and the answer to the first thing is yes. Affordable living wage is just that, it's got affordable living, and it's, and a piece of affordable living is the ability to have good transit, to have good bus routes, to have good affordable housing, to have utilities that are energy-efficient. So all those components are important for those folks, whether somebody is part-time, whether they're temp force or full-time. So what's a couple of solutions? We have seven labor unions right now that represent the city of Gainesville workers, there are seven bargaining units, and those should be able to represent both part-time, temp force, and if they do that, then they can bargain with power, and they can bargain with leverage. I know you have some people here in the Coalition that understand that there is strength in numbers, and when you do that, you bargain for rates and benefits such as health insurance that is affordable, because I'm at Santa Fe College, and similar to the city, our weight, our insurance costs are very high for the family, which you addressed, and they're too high and they're outstripping the wage increase, so we don't want that. So if you can bargain their way, and the second thing that you can do is, no, thank you, is make sure that you do go in with a coalition, not a Alachua County Labor Coalition, but where you put together different organizations, like different municipalities, you get the opportunity to bargain lower insurance, and it's essential, because insurance is actually the number-one cost increase that's impacting our workers at the moment. So thank you.
Yeah, once again, my name is Patrick Ingle, running for District 3 City Commissioner. I do support very much living wage for all workers, city workers, non-city workers, anybody who resides in the city, works in the city, needs to be paid on here. As for the health insurance costs, the fire department, yeah, is bleeding, the workers are bleeding from the high expenses because of the current structure of the Gainesville health plan. I do support the, to include other groups into the city medical plan to help lower the cost and have more bargaining power. That is one good approach to do it. I'm also open to list the other approaches too, but that's each, one approach is on the table now at the commission. I do support it to bring in more to help lower the cost. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, I, like the other candidate said, I'm very much in favor of a living wage, and I think, as we all know, I mean, the quality of life in Gainesville is just really great. We have great parks, we have great, great schools, it's a great place to live. The biggest issue I find for working people is the inability to really move ahead financially. You'll see a lot of folks that love living here, but they just can't afford it anymore because of the low wages that we have in Alachua County. And I think the city should be really making a solid leadership role in trying to raise at least the wages that we can, which is our own employees' wages. As it relates to health care, I think, I think the answer is fairly straightforward as to what we need to do, which is, we need to rebid it out, it's been a couple of years since we've really done a full look at where our insurance lies, and it's going to take money. We're going to have to make sure that we have set asides within our budget in order to make sure that we're paying folks, because right now, we're seeing huge turnover in a lot of our key positions, we're seeing a lot of, we're seeing, you know, understaffing in a lot of key areas, and if we don't get that up, it's going to be very hard for us to move forward on a lot of the things that we want to do to move forward as a city. So it's going to be critical, and we're just going to have to make room in the budget for that.
Casey Willetts for District 3, I support the living wage ordinance and trying to make sure that every single one of our workers at the city, no matter what their status is, they have a living wage. And a lot of people, you know, living wage, what it means to different people, Elizabeth Warren during her campaign would say something like, you know, if something didn't pay enough to keep a mom and a baby, kind of that unit of a family, a mom and a baby in a house and fed and clothed, then it wasn't a living wage. And so that's kind of what I, that's kind of what I think about. With the health benefits, talking with some of the city workers, Communication Workers of America, you know, it is getting out of hand, and they're getting into a larger pool, like other people have mentioned, is important. Like Mike said, I work at UF, and it's $50 a month just for me, for my health insurance, that's all I have to pay. I'm very glad about that, it hasn't moved in years. It's probably going to move at some point, and we're going to be very upset about it. But when we look at our city workers, and when I, when I get done with my, you know, if I get elected, I'm probably going to have to give up my job at UF, my full-time job, and I will be on just, you know, the city insurance, what they offer, and I can tell you, it's more expensive. So that larger pool is going to, is going to have to make a difference, but it's something that we have to prioritize, they're our workers, and we, it comes down, it's a moral issue. We got to give them health insurance, and it's got to be accessible.
A couple of people have kind of said it again already, but it's kind of my little tagline, this, Gainesville's a great place to live, it's a hard place to earn a living. You know, there's a, there are a lot of issues with low wages, and I was very proud to be one of the people leading the fight to get living wage passed at the city. Expanding out of contractors is going to be very important, but past wages, there are other things to consider. Insurance is one of the big ones, retirement, of course. I've talked to Communication Workers of America, I've talked to the GRU workers and the city workers, they believe enough in me to have endorsed me in this campaign, they think I can handle this, and I've got experience with it. I've negotiated for insurance for my members as president of the local electricians' union. It's something we have to prioritize. Whether we're able to buy into a bigger group, I think UF, being part of the state, doesn't typically play very well with counties and cities, so I'm not sure if that's going to be a possibility, but looking to partner with a county, looking to partner with other large, you know, even potentially other cities in the area, I think there are some possibilities for doing that. But not only for the city workers, you know, I was also very proud to be involved in trying to get a living wage and a union out at Santa Fe. You know, there's a lot of large employers we have here that aren't doing well by their employees, and us being able to stand up, help those employees work together to get better conditions is going to be just as important as what we can directly do for the city. We've got some options here, the people that are most affected by it believe in me to do this, and there's a lot of good we can do in this city, working together.
All right, our next question is going to be an audience question, Bobby's going to read that, and then Casey, you'll get the first response on this one.
Well, actually, it's going to be a partial audience question, it was very entertaining to read, but not reading it out loud in its entirety. So many of you indicated at least some level of support for the city's rental housing ordinance. One important component of that ordinance was that it made it unlawful to discriminate against a potential tenant based on a lawful source of income. In other words, compelling landlords to accept Section 8 vouchers, which is a direct way to make housing affordable. The city right now is considering multiple indirect ways to make housing more affordable in the long term, and maybe in the medium term. Should the, should the city continue on this path of indirect ways, policies that indirectly lower the cost of housing over time, or should they consider more, policies that more directly make housing affordable for tenants? And what should those policies be?
Casey, yep? We're going to start with Casey. We're staggering. Yeah, sorry, that's fine.
Okay. So with housing, it's got, it's almost always in the end going to be an all of the above, right? Because the thing is, is that we get here through like death of 1,000 paper cuts to where we're at. And so the thing is, is the paper cuts, we got to heal, we got to heal 1,000 paper cuts. Some of these are going to be indirect ways where the city doesn't actually have to spend very much money, it's more of a setting the rules and allowing, you know, more naturally affordable housing to exist, to occur, for people to be able to build it themselves, and some of it is going to be much more along the lines of direct. I support the idea that eventually, even a city has to spend actual money, particularly leverage money, it may not be to, you know, build the housing directly, but leverage their money so that more housing is built that's affordable. And, you know, whether that is a ballot measure in November, or ballot measure in November of 2024, the idea that the city would kind of get in the business of that, I don't oppose that. People say, oh, the city shouldn't be in the business of housing. We're in the business of power, we're in the business of water, we're in the business of providing parking, we're in, and those are like direct businesses, but then we're also in the business of providing services like parks and recreation. We dabble, you know, in health, we assist in education in some ways. So I don't think these are things that we shouldn't do as a city, because we can, it's within our purview. It may be a little unusual for a city, a city the size of Gainesville, but I think it's something we can do. And of course, with the, with the documented income, I absolutely support that we should tell landlords, you have to accept that, whether it is Section 8, disability, or whatever it is, those are forms of income, they are steady, you should not discriminate against a person, because when we talk about diversity of housing, part of that diversity is the actual people, their sources of incomes, their lives, their ages, their abilities, and sometimes even their ability to pay or who's paying.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I mean, as Casey said, we have to be doing this in multiple ways. The tools that the city has in order to push for affordable housing are not as strong as the trillion-dollar industry that we're talking about here. I mean, it's, it's an enormous industry, and every tool that we have that we can push on, and we should be looking at that as well as, you know, some of the consequences that we might not be thinking about in using that tool. I'm in favor of using, of mandating affordable housing in new developments, which the commission is now currently thinking of, but I'm also very much in favor of directly spending money, as Casey mentioned, on our lowest-income affordable housing. The city got into that when they began helping at Grace Marketplace and being a much more forceful hand in that. For our lowest-income residents, which is what, when we're dealing with homelessness and the folks that we really need to be working with, there's no amount of zoning regulation or changes like that that are going to help those folks. You need to get directly into the business, working through our nonprofit providers or through the city themselves to get safe homes for people, to get them off the street. But we also need to be talking about a whole lot of other things. How do we build more smaller units? How do we, how do we push developers to start building homes that work for working families instead of just the 4-4 high-rise student apartments that we're seeing a whole lot of? How do we make sure that we have a city that works for everyone and not just a small sliver of the community? And after, you know, 30, 40 years of developers focusing on the most luxury side of the market, we're losing a lot of our low-income affordable housing. With, you know, with all of the cuts that we saw during the Reagan administration and afterward, we're losing a lot of our public housing, the places that where a lot of folks with mental health issues are living. And so the city, the federal government's not going to pick up the slack for us, the state government certainly is not going to do the right thing on this. At some point, we have to realize that the only thing we have is we have our city government, we have our county, and if we want to solve these problems, we're going to have to find a way to solve them.
Very much. Yeah, these, both indirect methods and indirect methods are needed. Indirect methods could be even creating another city zoning that specifically says this zone is affordable housing. And let's define what affordable housing means, is that 30% of your income should not, your housing costs should not exceed 30% of your income, regardless where that income is coming from. That's what we define as affordable housing there, as well as whether the city wants to get involved directly in the construction and management, or partner with nonprofits, invite the nonprofits back. There are enough, there is enough multifamily, how, buildable lots in Gainesville to house 20,000 of the 24 low-income residents in the city. But we need to stress that that needs to be 100% affordable, not 10% affordable. We also invite incentives for businesses to come in to also hire, to pay additional higher wages, and to hire local established residents, residents that have been here a longer term and not bring in new. That's how we can build it. Thank you.
So affordable housing is a very, very complex issue, and affordable housing is really about affordable living. This is what I've said, because housing is only a small component of somebody who's in poverty, and their ability to afford transit, a person who's in poverty that can't afford a house often also does not have a vehicle to get to where they need to go to earn a living wage and to have careers that allow them to... them to pursue whatever they'd like to do with their family and have a vibrant sense of where they live in Gainesville. So yes, indirectly, the city should put pressure and figure out indirect methods of dealing with affordable living. So what's an indirect method? An indirect method is pursuing grant funding streams from the federal, from our federal government and the state, although, as you've pointed out, those may be slim at the moment. Another indirect funding stream is things like the CARES Act, which has very liberal ability to use the money as you have right now for various things in our city and improve our community. Third thing we can do is we do exactly what you just said, sir, which is you have to partner with the existing organizations that are already effective. Habitat for Humanity, I know they only build basically one house a semester over at Santa Fe College, but if we were to help them, we then build two houses. And that's two houses and two people in poverty and two people who have sweat equity who then have the ability to move into something wonderful. Direct aspects, direct aspects of funding for affordable living is exactly having GRU provide exactly what they're doing now, incentives for energy-efficient appliances, and they're forcing that down onto the landlords, which is important because that lowers the cost for the people who live there. And free RTS and transit routes are absolutely essential. And I support free RTS and transit routes for those who are already in poverty because that has a miniscule effect on the city budget, miniscule, and yet it affects all those people who are trying to get to the jobs and the careers and the schooling that they need. Thank you.
Thanks. We have to be really careful with this and this is why I always leave with democratic listening has to be the foundation. Landlords have not been listened to in this process. I'm not a landlord, I'm not representing them. But we've lost 30% of our rental units over the last several years because as these changes have taken place, landlords like local owners who own a few properties, they're selling them. They're refurbishing and they're selling them to owners, which is their right to do and fine to do, but they weren't given a seat at the table. And so you're putting downward pressure on folks who may not have a whole lot of ability to address that. You know, changing out windows, changing out appliances is very expensive without any incentives. So everyone has to have a seat at the table and we have to work these things out because the exclusionary zoning that they're trying to do away with now will, will not increase affordable housing and will wreak havoc on our neighborhoods and wreak havoc on our economy. There are a couple of things that we can do. One, there are developers who specialize in affordable housing. Gainesville Housing Authority is one, Billify Housing is another. Those are developers who need government funding to make their projects viable. They're nonprofits and they just need a little bit. And the county puts up money, the state puts up money, and so far, the city puts up no money. The city's got to put its own skin in the game to increase affordable housing. The other thing we can do is we need to work with developers that want to develop for the community. We've seen this happen before. In 1960, Phil Emmer established the Lincoln Estates Neighborhood and he built affordable housing that's still owned by the people who first bought them and they're passing down generational wealth. We can still do that if we can find and incentivize developers who will build housing to build the community as opposed to extracting wealth from our city and taking it elsewhere. But we have to have real conversations and everyone has to be at the table, everyone who's affected by it. And until we do that, we're not going to solve any of these problems in a long-term way.
As the chair of the Alachua County Affordable Housing for 10 years, we have a lot of discussions. And one of the discussions is that we simply have to be careful with our measures in which we talk about affordable housing. It's not a decision that you make very quickly. We got to find ways and we got to take our time. You know, Habitat for Humanity, there are other entities. We got to work very closely with them. And as Pastor Rayburn said, you know, we, we haven't had a seat at the table for the landlords and they're suffering. You know, we got this housing issue going on right now where they want to take it away. Well, you know, we need to keep what we have right now because what's going to simply happen is people on the east side that are most vulnerable, they're going to lose their land. It's going to be sold. And they're not going to have, you know, families are going, their, their places where they live and how they live are going to be misplaced. And I think we just have to have a true voice to understand that about our city. And if you're from Gainesville, you understand, if you're from Gainesville, you see that those people have been suffering. If you're from Gainesville, I remember as a little child writing to M.K. Rawlings, "And the east side has not changed." In order to have change, we got to be able to come together and make affordable change and that means true. The city does have to put their skin in the game and I believe the county does too. And on the state level, also with the Housing Authority, we all got to come together as a big happy family and let's figure out a solution and put our skin in the game so that people can live in this community and they don't have to feel because they're having affordable housing, they can't live. Yes, they can in this community. We can do it. Thank you.
If you could pass that back down to James, please.
Thank you. So the, the first question on whether or not I support the anti-discrimination ordinance is easy. Yes, I was, when we worked on it, big fan of it, very proud we got it in there. I'm going to push back a little bit on landlords not having a seat at the table. You know, the, the Labor Coalition worked on this for a long time, years, and landlords were absolutely involved. We've had multiple meetings with multiple landlords and several trade groups with the city commission, like they were absolutely part of this conversation and they had an impact on what this, what this looked like, what the regulations were, how fast they got turned in. They were definitely part of this. And so the Labor Coalition was too. I'm glad that we were able to work with the community and get these standards that were very needed put in place. There are some more things we can do. I do think the, the city needs to look at both long and short-term issues. We've got, obviously, long-term problems we're going to have to solve, but also some triage that has to be addressed pretty quickly. Affordable housing co-ops and, and trusts are certainly available as partners to work with. I think the city is going to have to put some money in that game to, to bring those guys in, but I'm all in favor of that. Holding developers accountable as they come into these neighborhoods and they come into our community, they need to understand that they're coming into our community and they're going to have to meet us halfway on some things. Like we can put more requirements on developers than we are right now. We have typically addressed affordable housing with incentives and I think we've got about as far as incentives are going to get us and we're going to have to start putting some requirements in place. You know, we are going to need a variety of housing across Gainesville. We are going to need workforce housing, we're going to need affordable housing. You know, there's, there tends to be a lot of, of luxury things that have been built lately and not much on the, the rest of that spectrum. And that needs to be addressed and we do have the tools that we can put in place to, to address that.
Thank you. Brian, you're going to get first shot on this one. So the University of Florida and Santa Fe College frequently express the public desire to be better community partners in our region. However, their often chronic underpayment of workers has contributed to generations of economic and educational achievement gaps in Alachua County. What would you do as a commissioner to push these entities to pay all employees a living wage and to cease opposing the right of their employees to unionize?
Wow. All right. Well, so what would I do to get the University of Florida to better? I mean, look, I've supported, I have been to labor protests at the University of Florida. I've, I've supported the recent unionization effort for staff at the University of Florida. I think collective bargaining is a really central part of that and, you know, I'm, I'm happy to continue to support the work of people. I mean, UF is by far our largest employer here. What they do has a disproportionate impact on everything else that happens in our city. When they are doing things that hurt our community, it hurts the city of Gainesville and I, and we need to be working with them when it makes sense to work with them and then we need to be standing up for our citizens when it makes sense to stand up for our citizens. And this is one of those instances where we need to be standing up for our citizens. And I think it's very central to both have a powerful collective bargaining unit within the University of Florida and we need to be pushing for them to pay better wages.
As a non-Gator, I don't have a dedication to support or UF, so I can be able to stand up to them when needed and work with them also when needed. So we need to demand that, this is the mission, we need to demand that they go ahead and pay the workers better, a living wage, or suffer the consequences regardless with that. Thank you.
So it sounded like this was really a, a two-part question. The first one talked about the partnership between the University of Florida and Santa Fe College and the manner in which they work together with, with Gainesville. I can tell you, I, I work at Santa Fe College, so this is a little interesting for me and Santa Fe College is actually a wonderful partner to the community. I think there's very few people who would disagree with that across both Alachua and Bradford County. Those are the two counties that actually Santa Fe College serves as their service district as a partner for career and technical resource and education and credentials and certificates and entrepreneurial degrees. Incredible. And those are leading to career and high-wage jobs. So they're doing a very, very good job there. And in fact, President Brody just unleashed a whole barrage of programs that are helpful because they've come with some federal funding that are going to allow us to provide credentials for people in one year, 18 months, and two years. And then they're making very good money with very good wages. So on the partnership, I believe Santa Fe is doing a very good job and I'll defer to the University of Florida. It's a gigantic organization, as, as been said there, and we don't have a lot of levers for the city to lean on them. As far as wages and increase, yes, of course, we should increase those. The question is, does the, does the budget support it at both University of Florida and Santa Fe? I can't speak for the University of Florida. I don't have that kind of expertise. I can tell you for Santa Fe, we have a lot of job vacancies right now, lots, lots of attrition, just like almost every other career, and that's unfortunate. And potentially providing additional wages and lower health insurance would be a fantastic way to try and get people back in on the employment sector.
It's pretty common among commissioners and among candidates to, to beat the chest about we're going to hold UF accountable to this or that. The reality is, like Ed said, there are very few levers that the city commission could actually pull to hold UF accountable to anything. About the only thing you can do is limit their land expansion, which is good to do anyway because that takes land off the tax roll. The fact is, we're a company town and our big company doesn't pay taxes and it doesn't pay its employees all that well. My daughter is a cancer researcher there, I can tell you. She does okay, but not that great. The solution is to grow our economy in sectors that are not dependent on UF and make UF compete for workers who can get a better job somewhere else paying better wages. We can try to use our, our influence to support unionizing efforts on campus and I'm all for that. I've marched on that as well. But actually, what the city commission can do is very little in that regard. But if we can grow our economy and, and get a life outside of UF and be less dependent on them, then all, I mean, all these things we're talking about require money. The city needs to spend money. The city doesn't have enough money because of UF. So we've got to grow ourselves apart from UF. And then if we do that, then, you know, treat UF like, like working at a fast food restaurant. You know, we're going to make McDonald's pay more. I mean, it'd be great if they did, but how about you just get a better job at one of these training programs from Santa Fe and have a career somewhere else because we've grown the economy in ways that are not connected to the university.
Well, I tell you, this is one of those issues and I'm, I'm like them. You know, you, you can't put much leverage. I worked for UF Police for eight years and they got every lawyer in town and everything else. You, you just can't put leverage on them. But I do think that it's important that, that the municipalities come together, have an annual meeting and get together and see what's going on. I like what Pastor Rayburn said. I mean, it's simply true. We got to get apart from UF and we can work with them, but I think it's important that when you're from here, you understand that the only jobs that you can get, that you can get a pretty okay wage is UF. It would be Santa Fe and it would be the VA. And without those, you're in trouble. So we got to find ways to sit down at the table and get with them and say, okay, how can we come together as one collective team to do this? And I, I just tell you, it's, it's hard to get UF, I'm going to tell you right now because they got all kinds of tricks and trades in there. But I think if we come together, we can do something, but it is going to be very difficult even for the commission to do it. But I think if we just sit down with them again, we're going to have to figure out something. I don't know what, but, but it's time for us to figure out something because people are literally hurting, especially on the east side of town and all over. People are just hurting. Thank you.
If you could pass that back down to James and Casey.
So it's been said several times and it's, it's not wrong. We don't have a lot of leverage over UF and Santa Fe. These are state agencies and we've got limited means of, of putting pressure on them. We do have some examples of, of working with them on some things, some, some healthcare in the community and some, some work with RTS, but on the whole, they kind of call their own shots. We do have a few levers and I do think it's important that we use them better than we have. Being able to negotiate when UF wants to expand and, and really holding them accountable when they are looking to, to ask the city for changes to land use or changes to zoning, I think we can get more out of them than we have gotten historically. Santa Fe has got kind of a, a special place in my heart on that one in that I was involved with a unionization effort in Santa Fe, gosh, was a couple of years back now, I guess. Literally, the, the adjunct professors at Santa Fe, many of them were borderline homeless. It was, it was ridiculous, the amount of money, the amount of resources that these institutions have and just how miserly they are with the people that are making those institutions actually function. Yes, I was very involved with the unionization efforts there before. I think we need to push that again. And, and without having some more levers, which is what that unionization gives us, then I, I think we'll be stuck where we are now. But again, using the levers we have, trying to get some more levers is the, the way to move forward on that.
We don't have a lot, a lot of levers. Everyone's already said that. The city being the best employer possible is a lever though. If we, if we get our wages up and if we get particularly the health benefits, if, if it's more competitive, that's a lever because then the other big employer in town has to respond. I work at UF. When I started there in 2015, I made $14 an hour and I worked for an awful boss. Years later, better job, great boss, enjoy it. But I come into this as a seven-year employee, seven years towards an eight-year vesting. It sounds like DeJean's vested and, you know, at Santa Fe, you're, you're probably vested in your, in your pension. I come in and not just do I come into this race a little vulnerable, but last year, last February, I got involved, the United Campus Workers from a phone call from a union organizer and from Jeremiah Tattersall saying, hey, you want to get involved? You want to join our steering committee? Do you want to do this? Do you want to do this? Want to help? Want to pass a petition? Do you want to be our spokesperson when we kick off in November on campus? And I'd said yes. I just kept on saying yes. And so I don't know what the city can do in all those situations, but I will tell you what I can do. I can speak as a current employee. Hopefully, when I go on the commission, still current, you know, knock on wood, I got to get to next June to get my eight-year of being vested. But the thing is, we, we can support in every way we can our unions that are already there, but particularly United Campus Workers is a wall-to-wall union. There are 12,000 un-unionized members there that can't join the other unions. We need the kind of support that'll get us towards an actual petition campaign so that we can vote on it and have a real union with real bargaining power. That's for teams, OPS, adjuncts, and we made that a focus. And I'm the, I, you know, I, I was on that, our steering committee. I did it for a year so that other people can get into it. I wanted a little more time and I'm stupid enough to have gotten into this, right? My time is now taken up. But we, we can make the moral argument. If they want to be the top five university, they need to be a top-five employer, not just a university, a top-five employer.
All right. So Patrick's going to start us off on the next question. Bobby will be asking that question if he can borrow the mic real quick.
One of the leading causes of economic inequality in our society today is workers' lack of union representation in their workplace. Numerous studies demonstrate that unionization and collective bargaining is the best anti-poverty strategy available to working-class people. First part of the question is yes, yes or no? If workers in this community seek to organize a union in their workplace, regardless of the employer, will you stand with them and support them publicly? So again, that part is yes, no. If workers in this community seek to organize a union in their workplace, regardless of who the employer is, will you stand with them and support them publicly? Secondly, what has been your past involvement with regard to standing with union organizing drives? For example, the Santa Fe adjunct faculty union drive and/or backing politicians who have sought to support or undermine union workers?
Yeah, I do support workers if they, regardless of employer, if they want to unite, unite, unite. It is a way to help improve wages and poverty like that. Also, if those don't want to unite, also too. It's up, up to them with that. I was, was up in, living up in New York, Poughkeepsie. Actually, at the time, I was homeless up there. I was working third shift at supermarket and I was a member of the local union up there for a short time. It was great with that. So yes, I do support, support that, for people who want to unite as well with that. As what I have done here, I actually support Alachua Labor Coalition here, be going back to 2018. I was, I helped drive a group down to Tamper where we did I was, I helped drive a group down to Tampa where we did campaigning and protests down in Tampa in 2018. So yeah, I do support. Thank you.
So thanks for the question. This is a very good question, and I like it because it's going to allow me to talk a little bit about the different sides of the coin I've been on in my career. Clearly, I'm in management now at Santa Fe College. And so the first question is, do I support the ability to unionize or collectivize? Absolutely. Number one, that's about ethics and integrity. So if workers in any organization want to get together, they should be allowed to do that. And that's whether it's in law, code, or administrative rule. They should be allowed to do that because that's the right thing to do. So early in my career, I was at Gainesville Police, and I first started as a Fraternal Order of Police, unionized member. I was a member, and I was, in fact, a labor rep. And so occasionally, when members got in trouble or had some things they needed to be interviewed about, I was often the rep that would be there. And then later, I got promoted. At Gainesville Police, I was a sergeant lieutenant, and once I did that, I basically, I was promoted out of my ability to be a labor union representative because it would have been a conflict of interest. Thank you. And so I ended up sitting years later. The chief assigned me to be the management labor bargaining rep on the other side of the table with the labor union. And the contract that we got out, that three-year contract with law enforcement at that time, was a fantastic contract that was valued by the law enforcement officers at Gainesville Police. And I was on the management side, and I said, this is not personal. This is about us all coming together for a common goal, to have good workers, good wages, and valued employees. And we did. So I've been on both sides, and certainly, I support that. It's the right thing to do.
Yes, to my question, my answer is yes, absolutely. Years ago in a previous life, I was an employee of Tampa Electric Company and a member of the IBW, and they literally saved my job after I fell off of a pole when my knee buckled. And the union, the union literally saved my job at Tico, so that was good. And I've also been an adjunct, Lord have mercy. There was one semester in Raleigh where I taught six courses at four different universities. And it was, I don't remember much about that semester, other than driving and reading Nova notes at the same time. Don't listen to that, Ed. It was in Raleigh, it was a different state. So yes, adjunct, the comment was made earlier about universities exploiting labor, it's a fact, especially adjunct. I've lived it. And this was several years ago, and part of the reason I got out of academia, and we were calling for unionizing then, and I'm glad to see that start to come to fruition. That's why I march at the UF campus, and I'll march anytime they show up because I hated that year of my life. And so yes, I will support anything. You guys need space to organize. You can come to our church. I'll give you space. I'll make you food and give you cookies and march with you. So I'm, absolutely. Come on, come on. We'll go right after you. Absolutely. But yes, 100% support that. That is definitely what we need, especially at the University of Florida. Thank you.
So the question is definitely yes. You know, I believe as a business owner here in town, I own Fortitude Security, and I believe that, you know, I support the unions. I believe that we could all get together, and, you know, that's a way for them to protect their freedoms, gives them the ability to have someone to talk to, someone to call on. And I believe the employer and the union should work together very strongly. Actually, it reminds me of a situation with the Gainesville Police Department where they were having bargaining issues, and they were trying to do a step plan. Well, I was there. I was on that scene, and I spoke up and said, we got to do better for the ones in blue and those ones that are all over this nation. And I've always supported the union, even when I was at the UF Police Department. I just think that anything they need, we need to come together. I think that's part of the problem in the country. Everybody's fighting everybody instead of listening, and the commission has not done a great job of that. And I believe that they need to listen and work with those and stop making it hard. OK, these guys need ways to live. It needs to be, you know, you've got a lot of officers right now, even with the state troopers. I was talking to somebody the other day, and they were saying how they, bottom line, a lot of them apply for food stamps because they cannot afford to live. That is ridiculous. They fight for us, they do what they can for us, and we ought to give them the resources that they need to be able to live, and it needs to be affordable. So again, I support the unions wholeheartedly. Thank you.
So this is a super easy one for me. I've spent pretty much my entire life in the labor movement. I would absolutely stand with any workers trying to unionize in the area. I will in the future. I have in the past. Gosh, with AT&amp;T, and I'm working on a local company right now trying to unionize. We've got, you know, worked at Santa Fe trying to help them unionize. I've got a strong history of working with people trying to better themselves through unionization. Past that, I've been endorsed by just about every union in town. The Teachers Union has endorsed me, both Latchell County and Marion County, because when they were trying to pass "Don't Stay Gay" and banning books and attacking teachers' unions, I was in Tallahassee, shoulder to shoulder, with the teachers trying to stop these terrible ideas coming from Governor DeSantis and the Florida Legislature. I've been endorsed by UFF and the Faculty of Florida because when teachers were under attack and they were talking about not letting them have freedom of speech, when they were trying to get rid of graduate assistants, were trying to get rid of some fees, I was standing there with them, trying to make it better, lending my strength to that movement, listening to what help they needed and providing that. The city workers and the bus drivers and the workers at GRU have all endorsed my campaign because I've sat with them, I know what they need, we've got the same goals, and they trust me to get that done. So as I said, I've got a lot of very proud history with the labor movement in both here and in Tallahassee, and I look forward to continuing that from the other side of the dice.
So yes, I support the right of every worker to, you know, form a democratic organization in their workplace and unionize because the truth is that labor is prior to and should have a higher consideration than capital. That is, I think, an asterization of maybe Lincoln, but maybe it wasn't even Lincoln. Yes, it was? All right. So I got to talk, in the last question, I got to talk a little bit about my current, you know, experience with, you know, organizing my own union, organizing myself into a union. But I want to talk just roughly a little bit about my experience before that. And I didn't actually have all that much experience. I was kind of the person who, when someone called me and said, will you come? I said, yes, I'll show up. Yes, I'll do that, right? So you want to come to the labor dinner, spaghetti dinner? Yes, sure, I'll come. Do you want, will you sign a petition for, maybe it was grad students on campus with their fees? Yes, I'll do that. And my support was just kind of the general, like, yeah, labor, good. Because my mother was a teacher in Arkansas, and even though we didn't have really strong unions in Arkansas, when I first went into school, when she first started teaching, there was, I think it was '88, '89, there was a huge strike, huge, huge. And it, I know that that strike affected my mother's wages and affected our family and made it so that, you know, our family of six would not be the struggling lower end of the middle class, but that we'd be right in the middle, and there'd be some opportunities for our family in the future. I think all the way back when, just to tell the story, I'm pretty sure my dad, I don't think he was a scab. I think he was in management at a dairy in Kansas, and there was a strike, and I know that he had to go work somewhere else. And so I described my journey in the labor movement from, you know, the son of a scab. I don't think he was actually a scab. He was management, he just got sent to go work somewhere, to now being endorsed by CWA, which is the city's union for a lot of the city workers, and North Central Florida Central Labor Council. I wish my United Campus Workers were well enough organized. We're only about a year and a half old and only about eight, nine months from our announcement. They're not ready to endorse yet, but next time, I'm going to get their endorsement.
Yes, I also, like the other candidate said, very much support the ability to organize your workplace. I don't, in the system as it currently is, I don't see how it's possible for workers to really make their voice heard when everyone is talking with their bosses and talking to management on an individual level. We need to have collective bargaining within our organizations and within these businesses. It makes, I think, both the organizations, whether it's government, business, stronger because you have, because you're a unionized workplace, and it makes it so that you are getting better employees in the door. I've also been endorsed by the AFL-CIO of North Central Florida, as well as the Communications Workers of America, which is the largest labor union in our city, in our city government. Because I have, you know, not been as involved as James has been over the years in labor work, but I've worked with the Teachers Union when a giant charter school was thinking of coming into town, Charter Schools USA. I worked with them to push back on that and make sure that we are keeping our public schools, public and local. Have marched with labor unions since I was a young college activist. I think this is a really important issue, and it's something that I'd be proud to stand with in the future.
Thank you. All right. Ed, you're going to be first off on this question.
Yes, sir.
So the Latchell County Labor Coalition, our youngest campaign is a campaign that is very concerned with transformation of our criminal justice system and the reduction of unnecessary arrests in our community. As a commissioner, would you be willing to ask the city manager to direct Gainesville Police Department to bring back detailed, ongoing statistics to the commission regarding, for instance, how many arrests were made, the types of charges, and by which officers?
So what's the chances I get the criminal justice question and I'm the police officer? Right? To start. So interesting, because the question is, they actually do that right now. So I don't know if you're aware of that, but Chief Scott, in fact, just had a very comprehensive report. Lonny Scott, who was promoted from his acting role, which I support, to a full-time role as chief of police, actually, not two months ago, was talking about the nature of police statistics and what they did with juvenile arrests. And the reason he was talking about it, because they were having a very robust discussion about open container and alcohol and that issue, and it led them to report, in fact, all kinds of arrest statistics. So that's already done. I support full transparency in law enforcement. Even if it was not public record in law enforcement, you want scrutiny and you want attention on how we do our job because that's how we do our job ethically and with integrity. That's how I've lived my life. So it's an easy one. I don't have to say, yes, I support. It's actually being done. And the other interesting thing about the local law enforcement agencies, this is not to say we don't have challenges, but we have not typically faced the same challenges that have been in the, thank you, that have been in the national landscape for the way that the communities get along with their law enforcement. This is not saying we're perfect. This is saying that you haven't seen some of those really horrible use of force, law enforcement using, showing misconduct and abusing people in other communities. Why don't we have that? Because our partnerships have been excellent. Our partnership at Santa Fe College is excellent. Gainesville Police is excellent. And I think that transparency in everything we do is critical to the profession. That's why it's a profession. I support it.
I'm just going to echo what Ed said. Transparency is very important. I would also be in favor of having an independent review board for the city police department to have actual authority to review any hard cases we have. But I agree, we have a limited number of those here. My experience, both working at Grace and as a pastor, specifically on the southeast side of town, I've had to interact with GPD quite a bit, and I have to say, it's been a positive experience. They have a partnership with Meridian. I've had to call them. I've had to Baker Act people over the last few years, and that's always a painful experience. But I've observed them firsthand do a really good job at handling those situations really well. And, you know, I'm a pastor, but I'm also an ethicist, so I'm always really, and I've done it in Raleigh, I'm always willing to put my body in between the perp and the cop. I've done that more than once. I haven't had to do that in Gainesville yet. I'm always willing to do it. And I started five years ago, like, ready to do it, and it's taken me a while to be like, oh, OK, you know, we have like an actual mental health person here helping. Maybe I can relax a little bit, too. So yes, all for transparency. I would like to see a review board with some authority and some teeth. That is lacking in city government. But our biggest problem with the police department is they're 25% understaffed. So the officers we have are overworked, and they're underpaid. Their pay and benefits are as in bad a shape as fire and rescues are, and we don't need to give them more things to do. We do need to give them more people to do them because the stresses of those jobs are high, and they're not staffed properly to be the peace officers that we need. Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I would have to echo Pastor Rayburn as well. With my experience, I actually was in the Gainesville Police Explorers from the age of 14 to 21. I used to go to his house all the time. We used to swim. So I've been on that road with Gainesville Police Department for a long time, and I think that they're doing great. I know that Chief Tony Jones have really instilled in our community, our community policing. I think a lot of times, the reason we haven't had fatalities, we haven't had a lot of things happen in this city is because of the policing with the community, number one, also with him working with the different entities. And so that speaks, and I oftentimes say, you know, I know he's going to be moving into a new role, but I'm like, oh, man, I'm so used to him being in that role and being able to go to him and knowing that our community knows that they're safe, that he has that experience. He knows how to talk to a lot of the people on the east side. He's familiar with those families. And so that's kind of hard to kind of lose that. But I do think that, you know, we can use a review board. It never hurts to have someone looking at what they're doing. But I think overall, our police department does a wonderful job. They really do care. I think we do need to retain more in-house, at home, and also think the financial standpoint. We need to be paying for those guys, I would like to say, for life because what they do is for life. You know, when we need them, they come, and so we got to find ways to make them to be able to live in a great city with great wages, and that's just what we need. So thank you.
So I'm going to answer a couple of things there. Yes, I think transparency is very important. Also, I think we really do need to look at the number of arrests that happen that aren't necessary, whether, I can tell you personally, I've been with people that have been arrested at peaceful protests, that charges were all dropped, but they were held in jail for time. When an arrest didn't need to be made, there was no danger to anyone. It was people exercising their rights, being cuffed and drug off to jail in this town. I don't know if everyone really understands the impact that being arrested can have on your life. There was actually a pretty good article in the Gainesville Sun about it, either today or yesterday. But the impact it can have on being able to find a job, the impact it can have if you've got kids waiting at home. You're often not given your medicines and things like that if you've just been arrested and pulled into jail. It has a very big impact on someone's life and isn't always necessary, and I think we need to focus on getting around that in some parts. We can look at a police review board, but again, in the state of Florida, state law has taken away the ability of any local municipality putting teeth into a board like that. Also, I wanted to say, like, I've been at Gainesville for a while, and I can think of half a dozen times in the past 10 years, we've made national news for problems with police. You know, I remember it was 10, 11 years ago now, university police kicked in a guy's door and shot him in the face on a, basically, what was it? Wellness visit. We were in the streets protesting about that. You know, the armored personnel carriers pulled over somebody for giving them the bird, and we made national news. You know, we just sent a SWAT team in to get documents out of a civil matter between two real estate agencies and made national news. We made national news for police brutality three, four years ago by a guy being drugged out of his car and looked a whole lot like he was fixing a good shot. So things can definitely be worse than where they are here, but things can also definitely be better. And I think it's important not to forget the issues that have cropped up that we need to keep in the front of our mind.
So, you know, I support transparency because, you know, sunshine is the best disinfectant. Without the numbers, you know, we don't know what we're doing, right? City Commission is going to see a lot of numbers, but there's a lot of, like, real people behind those numbers. And if you've ever been, you know, super involved in the community where you go talk to absolute strangers, like voter registration, something like that, you will just hear the stories. Some people who can't, maybe they can't get registered because they're, you know, they formerly, they had a felony on the record. But also just the stories of, like James said, that, you know, they get arrested and how it disrupts their lives and how if they don't have bail, it disrupts their lives. And we're seeing that, you know, the unnecessary arrest, I mean, if we want to talk about economic justice issue, if we want to talk about, you know, being able to afford where you live, being able to afford medical care, you can't afford any of those. If you lose your job because you don't show up because you get an unnecessary arrest or even a necessary arrest that you didn't need to be drugged through the system and you didn't have bail, you couldn't make bail, or making that bail puts your family, you know, at economic risk. And so lowering unnecessary arrests, and, you know, and this is not the thing I have the most experience with, but listening to the community, to our social justice and our criminal justice activist community about this to identify what we could be doing better, I think it is a, it's, when we talk about levers, about affordable housing or, you know, good jobs or things to make Gainesville just, you know, a better place to live for everybody. everybody, one of the levers that maybe us here don't experience, maybe here we don't experience, is an arrest that throws your life off track. And so let's see the numbers.
Yes, I would support collecting more data. I will point out, I think Ed Book mentioned this, if you go to data.cityofgainesville.org, they have tons of very robust data. And as kind of a data nerd myself, and if you're like that, it's, there's a wealth of information in there. They will collect arrests as to what someone was arrested for, where they were arrested, the race of the person that is arrested. You can find some things that are both, you know, exciting and alarming as you're diving through that. But I think, as Casey mentioned, we need to be using data to inform our policymaking. We need to be knowing how things look in the macro scale. But then there's certain things, particularly with policing, that you just can't pick up with the data. Things like how interactions are going with folks as they're interacting with police. You know, what we hear a lot from folks that are in more policed communities is that the fear of what could happen, and that they've seen happen to people, or the stories that they've heard, has a disproportionate impact on their lives, and we need to make sure that we're balancing both the data that we're collecting with that, with those real human stories. And I think that's true with all policymaking. It is a difficult world. We have to balance out both, yeah, both the sort of cerebral data side of it and the people's side of it. And in policing, that's more true than anything. But I'd be curious what you guys would like to see more of in terms of that data collection, because the more that we can do, the more it can better inform our policymaking, the better a city will be.
I have to say, ditto for everything that Ed Book has said, in addition to increase And also, we have to, we are blessed to have a good police department. We don't make the news that other cities do. We have, there is a professionalism there, so we are very blessed. Because of the transparency and reporting that is already in place, continue what we're doing there. We have to increase it to help with policy. And we have to do rider logs that would help. Anything but open, even by, yeah, but definitely, we also need to, police empire are two core services that the city is responsible to support. And we have to continue support that to ensure that our police can live and don't have to worry about their own wages, their own salaries, their own health, like that, even their own retirement. Thank you.
Can I just interject a second? Is this the last one?
Yes.
Okay, so we weren't supposed to do this. I am on the police advisory council. That question is clumsy. I kind of put it forth a different way. It's not to get the data, it's to direct the GPD through the city manager. There's consistently 800 people in jail any given day the last three years. There's a lot of arrests that don't need to be made. We want more citations. The data is, who's making these arrests that could be cited? So I know that they do present data, they also present the police advisory council. There has to be a way to get the number of arrests down that are unnecessary in the city. A lot of them are for misdemeanors. They don't need to go through the system. I'm sorry, I just had to clarify that.
Fair enough. All right.
Do you want us to, like, respond to that?
No, I just had to clarify. It was, it was a question that got moved around.
Right. Because what you're talking about is policy, like, that's, I mean, our criminal justice system is based on prosecutorial discretionary, yeah.
I just want to start with the answer. It's not, we know that that-
Right. That's not the beat cops, that's the people telling them who to arrest.
And I think folks, I think folks addressed a little more broadly in their answers, kind of the general sentiment, so thank you for that.
I just didn't want it to look like we were dumb. No, we didn't know that they give out the data.
We can't have this conversation starting. We have more questions to go. We try to respect everyone's time. I'm sorry.
So I do want to dig in a little bit more on the rental housing ordinance. As was mentioned, this is an initiative that was a major campaign of Labor Coalition we worked on for a few years. It's newly being implemented. And for folks that are not completely familiar with it, I just want to talk about some of the finer points here, and I'm going to follow up with a question, starting with you, Mike. So this ordinance that we got passed, expanded licensing to more rental properties throughout the city than it previously applied to. And we actually lobbied for a reduction in the cost of the licensing. Part of that process is that these rental properties would be inspected regularly to make sure that they were meeting basic safety standards, as well as energy and water efficiency standards. We advocated for stronger anti-discrimination protections in housing, improved communication requirements for landlords, and a city-sponsored mediation program to help address the rampant rental deposit theft that happens in this community. So that is the ordinance, as was spelled out, as was passed by the commission, and as we've been implementing. So a number of you have expressed at least some level of support for the ordinance. Would like to hear, are there any elements of what I just said that you do not support? Or if you would like to see any changes to the ordinance, please go ahead and elaborate on those. Let's try to be really specific on this. Because it's a very specific policy. So thank you.
I will answer just personally. We rent. We've rented the same house since we moved here five years ago from Raleigh. And it's an older house. And if something breaks, I fix it myself. I try not to call the owner. He raised his family here, and now he lives about 10 minutes away. It's not like, you know, he's not a company owning a bunch of rental properties. I think he had maybe two. Frankly, this ordinance scares me to death. Because if he comes in and fixes all the things, I'm like, if they try to do an inspection, I'm going to try to tell them no, frankly. Because if he raises my rent, I'm going to have to move out of the county. Right? Our rent is reasonable. He hasn't raised it in five years. And I've been praying for the last two years that he not look at property values, that Zillow doesn't work on his computer or anything, because, like, I'm trying to raise my family in this house, right? And the housing market is not affordable at all. And it's, I don't know what I'm going to do. So I don't know how to answer this question outside of my own personal fear that for him to replace all the windows that are, they're original, and I know my GRU bill is ridiculous, so maybe my increase in rent would be offset by my decrease in my utility bill. And so we've got to find a way to balance these small owners. Like, we can make a distinction between you own less than five properties or something, I don't know. But I'm worried that people like my landlord are going to be like, nah, I'm done, sell it. I can make half a million dollars from this house right now. Why would I invest all this money? He's put a new roof on, he's put a new AC unit on. Anything big, I call him about, he does take care of, but it needs to be repiped, it needs to have new electrical put in. I hope he doesn't do that. I hope he doesn't see this video, frankly. And so I'm worried about people like me who are like, I can't afford a rent increase. Right? I can't, I can't afford, I'll have to literally move to, like, Williston or something if this happens. So I don't know how we balance what are good policies that need to be done, and we don't want slums. And I've visited, I've delivered food to people who are living in abject conditions that need to be addressed. So what you're doing is good, but then there are people like me that are on the bubble that like, what you're doing is good for the people at the bottom, but the people, like, a step above the bottom, you may make things worse for us. So where's the balance?
You know, I'm kind of with Pastor Rayburn, you know. In this community, I think we need to, you know, I was, there's an apartment complex that my company patrols, and we don't have it anymore, but the landlords came in, and now it's just, they just don't care about the place. I mean, they give them window units, they don't fix anything. It's just gotten that bad. And so I'm with him, you know, but at the same time, I think we do need to look at this. I think there may be other ways we can do this. I think that, you know, the city department that goes out and does that right now, they got enough on their hands. I mean, we got them doing everything. And so we have to find another way, quite frankly. But we do have an issue in Gainesville with that. We have an issue with, just these apartment complexes are horrible, and they don't care. But like Pastor Rayburn said, what about those ones, because that's all they can afford? So I'm a believer in faith, and I believe, like Pastor Rayburn, sometimes we've got to have compassion. And we've got to figure out that balance. And I really think that with the new commission, I believe that there is really going to be a balance, because we all have different mindsets. We all want what's best for the community. And I believe all of us are fighting for the same thing, which is common sense decisions and listening to the people. So I think that's what's going to get it. Us listening, following through, and making real decisions for the community. And when you're from here, you can do that. When you're not, it's hard. So, you know, people leave us and leave the commission, leave all these hard things for us to do, because they're not here anymore, and we have to clean it up. That's what's going on right now. We're cleaning up a mess. So thank you.
Can I sit down?
So I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but, and I should correct me if I'm wrong, but the way the ordinance is set for the energy efficiency, there's basically a point system, and you've got to do some things on there, but not everything to get up to a level, correct?
You certainly don't have to replace windows.
Sure.
Correct.
So when we said, like, we need to strike a balance, like, we worked really hard to strike a balance. The way this ordinance works isn't you go in and everything that needs to be fixed has to be fixed right now. It's basic safety things have to be fixed. We have to have a long-term look at how we're going to get this up to energy standards. There's a long phase in for it. There's a point system with things as simple as changing showerheads and low-flow toilets and LED lighting. There's very affordable chunks of that that can be taken first on that. So this ordinance, I think a lot of thought went into. Landlords are part of the conversation, the community was part of the conversation. Community activists from all across this coalition got together and worked on this ordinance. And I think a lot of the concerns that they're bringing up here were addressed when we made this ordinance. Past that, you know, it got mentioned that we've lost a lot of small landlords over the past few years. I don't doubt that. Somebody put up a house for sale in my neighborhood, and it sold less than 24 hours later for $20,000 more than what they were asking for. So, yeah, like, you can't make rents, like, that's, the problem with those going away is giant amounts of money coming in from South Florida, coming in from outside the community that are willing to pay way more than what a house typically costs here. And that is what is driving some of these away. Also, I would like to say, the mediation program that is part of this, to make sure that you have got some independent person to step in when it comes to getting your deposit back, is hugely important and has made a big impact on a lot of lives already. I think that's just about it on time.
So the only part of this that I've really ever had any question about, is maybe the water efficiency, maybe with the low-flow toilets, because maybe, a toilet is actually a pretty expensive thing to, you know, replace brand new, right? So that was one that stuck out in me, like, maybe that doesn't belong in there? Maybe. But everything else, it was about basic safety. And we're talking about safety for your lives, your children's lives, and the kind of basic efficiency that it's not, it's not all, everything, but, you know, some things. I rented for seven years, and the person I rented from for the last two, you know, she had previously lived in this townhouse, and she had two of them. And when this came up, she, you know, she complained a little bit, but she went ahead and, ahead of time, went ahead and did it, right? Because this is, you know, she knew it was coming. And of course, right now, we're just now bringing it back in-house to inspect. It was, you know, out of house. We're just now doing it, because we're behind and we need to fix it. But she did it ahead. I already had, I thought I had pretty good insulation, but she went ahead and stepped it up. And when you take a townhouse and you can have, I don't know, a winter electricity bill of only $45, let me tell you how that made my life so much easier. She did, you know, because she'd already been taking pretty good care of it, but she stepped up the couple of things she saw that needed to happen. I don't even remember when the inspection happened. I think she just went ahead and did it, and then the inspection was going to come later. And so, you know, now, after seven years, I finally bought my, I bought an apartment. And I bought it from a landlord that had two of them. And I don't know that it was upgrades that made this person sell it, it's that the market was finally hot enough that they just getting rid of their whatever. And unfortunately, I'm buying high, maybe low interest, and I'm finally, at the age of 40, or, you know, 39, you know, I own my little slice of Gaines, my little slice. But I support this, because renters deserve, they deserve a shot at having safe and efficient housing. And the only way is that if someone like the government is going to give them a little, you know, a little power.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm broadly in favor of the renters' rights ordinances as well. You know, a lot of housing advocates talk about the three Ps of affordable housing. There's producing enough housing for everyone, protecting existing affordable housing and protecting tenants is the three parts of the stool that you need to do to make sure that you have safe places for people to live. And I think this is a really important portion of that. I, you know, when you go out knocking on doors, when you talk with folks, you'll hear a lot of pushback, which is probably what you're hearing up here, is landlords who are very upset about X, Y, and Z. But my understanding is that when this ordinance first came out, there was really a lack of clarity, both from staff and to the landlords, as to what was going to be enforced, how that was going to be enforced, just sort of hiccups when you're first, you know, putting out a new policy, which has really been largely worked out. They've made some tweaks to the policy since then. But I think there's a lot of sour taste in folks' mouth because of the way the initial rollout happened, which, you know, if you remember, the Affordable Care Act, when that was first rolled out, there was some hiccups with that. We were really leading on this issue in the state of Florida, thanks to the great work of the Latchell County Labor Coalition. And sometimes that means that there's, you know, you've got to work some things out at the beginning. But broadly, I think that everything that you guys have talked about is important. You know, I think that it may be worth looking at some of the environment, the water standards and the electricity standards, but absolutely, we need to make sure that we have energy-efficient homes and that we have water-efficient homes, because we're seeing a lot of folks that are spending far too much money on their utilities, particularly now with GRU rates where they are, and with water bills going up the way they are. So I think everything that you guys are trying to do is really important, and, yeah, and I would certainly defend it.
Yeah. I support tenants' rights, and I support housing that should be energy-efficient. I don't necessarily support this bill because it's defective, because I read through it. I'm not sure, you know, the tenants have read through it, but the energy efficiency provision in the current code has been redacted. So basically, and I was against, I commented publicly on the forum when they had the vote to raise the fee, I was against the raising of the fee, because the current code is defective, because of the energy efficiency provision has been redacted. A lot of other sections of the code that was important for the tenants has been redacted. Just another way for the city to get money. So I think it was more like a snow job that the city did on people. I have a great landlord, I'm out talk, talk to him. He would like to see lower costs involved. One thing he likes to see changed is lower costs. More of that. Thank you.
So I think probably everybody across the table here would agree that the philosophy and concept of somebody having a good roof over their head, and energy-efficient appliances, and clean water, and running plumbing is absolutely essential. So the ordinance and concept is excellent, but it's relatively new. And two years is a drop in the bucket for basically development of an ordinance. What I am actually concerned about in the ordinance is this. I worry that the cost will get passed down from the people who own those units, which has been mentioned here by a couple of the other candidates, and who will bear those burden will be the very people who cannot afford it. So it may have collateral impact on those who are in poverty, and that concerns me. Now, there is a good piece of the ordinance, and it's been mentioned, the ordinance has some different thresholds. And the thresholds for what has to be repaired are essentially safety thresholds. You can't have, you must have energy, you must have air conditioning, for example. You can't have a broken window, because it's a hazardous condition. And so those are some good standards. Thank you. I do worry about the collateral impacts of the ordinance, and I think a commission that is really mindful of how it impacts those who are in poverty and need, will probably need to take a look at the ordinance in a year and look back with input from everyone and say, what's working, what's not, and perhaps tweak it in ways that benefit those who are most in poverty and need. We started here, right, sir?
Yep. So Dejean will answer first on this next one.
And this will be the last question.
All right.
All right. So this question may be a little wonky, but it does get at one of the issues that we work on at the Latchell County Labor Coalition, environmentalism and climate change. Although, full disclosure, we have not yet taken a position. The ACLC has not taken a position on this issue. However, I think it is a worthwhile question that should be addressed. So for the record, ACLC has not taken a position on this. Kind of wonky. Also, feel free to not use all of your time on this one.
Would you be in favor of allowing homeowners to go all solar and disconnect from the grid? What about local solar arrays, like one to four blocks on a single connection?
All right. All right. You know, you know, everything's solar now. Everybody wants to go to solar in our community, and I think that it would, it would actually be good. People are, right now, they're suffering. GRU rates are out of control. People don't know what to do. We have people all around, you know, you know, we, I mean, social services, they're getting all these different helps because guess what? They can't pay their light bill. And so we have to find ways to make it easier on them. And again, I will say this, the citizens have been ignored. My, my light bill used to be 40 bucks. Last month, it was $250. And it's just me and my house. And I'm not home half of the time, so I don't understand. So we've got to do something, and anything that can alleviate, anything that can help our community, anything that can help those that are less fortunate, because we've forgotten about them, it will make it easier. So yes, thank you.
So this one's kind of in my wheelhouse. I do an awful lot of work as an electrician, just in power generation and whatnot. I'm not sure how much sense it makes to run a house completely off-grid. I don't think we should keep it from happening, but that's not how I think most of the best systems particularly work. If that's what somebody really wants to do, yeah, I think you could pull yourself off-grid. I think there's limited benefits to that, but that could be up to the homeowner. As far as smaller generation, I think we definitely need utility-grade solar. I think that will address a lot of problems with GRU. The smaller utilities, I'm, there's some issues with making sure it's safely done. If it's not going to be overseen by utility, and you're trying to do it like as a small community, you can be making a lot of power there, and making sure that that's properly regulated and safe, needs to be a concern. But, but in general, moving towards solar and whatever those options look like, I think opens up a, an awful lot of opportunities. I think we definitely need utility-grade solar as a utility. And there's some other ways we can work that in, in different parts of the community.
So grid defection is something that is going to be affecting GRU and all utilities in the next five, 10, 20, 30 years. And this is a huge issue. Because once a, once a customer comes off the grid, they, they're no longer, you know, chipping in whatever little amount they were for maintaining the entire grid. And this is an opportunity where particularly people with more capital, homeowners, not renters, and people with a lot of money or, or access to, you know, loans, are going to be able to, you know, put a lot of solar panels on their house and come off the grid. I think this is a dangerous proposition for GRU since we own it, because you're not going to have as many customers to bear any kind of burden of anything you want to do. I think it's something we've got to really look at, about whether it's that we allow it versus whether we incentivize it. I do not want to incentivize it at all. So solar belongs in utility scale, or even community solar, where groups, organizations can go in, people can buy shares. Minnesota has programs that have been very, very successful in what they call community solar. But I don't think we should be, and we certainly should not be incentivizing individual homeowners to go off the grid, because together we are stronger when we're all connected to the grid. And there are going to be opportunities possible in the future as well with, with distributed batteries that, in essence, they operate as a power plant, a backup, a peaker power plant. And I would love to keep those people on the grid. If you've got enough money to fully run your solar, and you're going to put in some batteries, and batteries are going to continue to get fancier, I want them on the grid so they can possibly be that backup, the peaker plant, the, they call them like, you know, virtual power plant. And we're going to start to see that happen. Whether someone should have the right to do it versus whether we're going to encourage it at all, is probably the question that City Commission someday might have to come up with. I don't know what I think about the right, but I certainly, I don't think we should encourage it. I think it is going to leave the poorest and the renters on their own with a huge utility.
Yeah, let me start with the Brian Eastman Gainesville City Commission District Four. Let me start with the microgrid concept. The, there's some interesting research being done into microgrids. The Obama administration, or I'm sorry, the Biden administration is doing some research into it now. And we have, I guess UF has its own microgrid, and then I believe UF Health Shands has their own. And I've heard some interesting ways that residential areas could, could go and have, maybe not totally off of the GRU grid, but to have, you know, their own sections. And there's some interesting concepts there that would be worth exploring. As it relates to people going totally off the grid, there's certainly some equity issues on that. Hawaii has had some issues where people are able to totally go off of solar, while at the same time, that helps the folks that have large houses with large roofs, which tend to be wealthy, while hurting people that are poor and live in multifamily housing or just in smaller homes. And so I don't think that we should be stopping folks from going off the grid. I mean, it's their home, they, if they want to, you know, turn off the electrical power and then put their, and then have a big old battery that, that powers them through the few days that, that there's no electricity, that'd be, I can't imagine stopping them from doing that, but that is something that we're going to have to figure out. And I agree with, with James Ingle. We need to really be looking and citing utility-grade solar in more areas. If, right now, you're seeing GRU bills going up, mostly because we have such large investments in natural gas, well, many of the utilities around us have invested in solar, which is much, much less expensive and diversifies out their energy. We did not do that. We went with a biomass plant, which we can go into in a different time. But the, but by not investing in solar, we're now seeing our GRU bills going up. People are really hurting, and we should have done that years ago. Thanks.
As for, it is, I do agree that having people go off the grid, too many of you go off the grid, will hurt GRU income and the city, and collectively as a whole. I'm there. I more propose that GRU, while we entered the biomass as a producer, enter the solar producing, but instead of building a separate solar farm out in the swamp somewhere, this is why I propose a rooftop solar unit, where GRU will own, install, maintain panels, have a producing, become these additional rents producer, and then provide flat rate billing for users, for the customers. No more meter, no more meter rates, just flat rate. That's what I propose.
So I'd like to start by answering the question first. And in this particular case, I don't have a lot of knowledge. About going off the grid, that's just something that I would need to do some more research on. And I don't know what the collateral impacts are. But I will say this, from a public utility standpoint, it's been said, it's typically the people who can afford solar. I just had a solar in the last 12 months. I had them do an estimate for my house. And I have a tin roof, an aluminum roof, with $35,000 to put that. So what that tells me is that probably what's been said is, your wealthier people or people with capital can put it on there. And if I were to go off the grid, and I'm just thinking this out loud, then who that's going to most impact is, I'll afford it, my utilities will go down, but somebody else's utilities are going to go up. And the people's utilities who will go up in a public utility are those who are least able to afford those increases. And that's really important. So I'm thinking out loud that I don't, probably do not support someone coming off the grid in a public service utility, because it hurts those who most actually need the utilities in first. I do support sustainable sources of electricity. And, and those are things like wind and solar and alternative fuel sources. And that's clearly where we should be going. I served with Keep Alachua County Beautiful for years. I still love that organization. I was on the city beautification board. And, and we've, and two organizations, I mean, have adopted roads. So the environmentally sensitive part of what we should be doing in the long run is clear. We should do that. Interesting question and a difficult one. I'm not, I'm not actually certain as far as the off-the-grid question. Supporting solar, absolutely.
I would say no. Within the, within the context of the city of Gainesville, the GRU customers, no, you should not be allowed to go, should be prohibited going off the grid. You don't get to pave your own roads. If you're on city water, you don't get to dig a well. You've got to use the city. We have to participate together. I would also be in favor of solar panels on every roof in town. That will take a lot of work, a lot of things to figure out, because liabilities and things like that. But the same amount of money that you could spend investing in a big field of solar panels that hurts the environment out somewhere in the swamp, as Patrick said, you could spend that money putting solar panels on all the roofs in town that would require a lot of rewiring, because the services to the house are not made to go two ways. But those are jobs. Those are employment opportunities for people to work. The problem you'll hear, though, is that if we do that, the more we go green with GRU, the less revenue GRU brings in, and that's going to hurt the general fund transfer. So we've got this entire thing where so much of our economy for the city is based on the regressive tax, that is the general fund transfer, that we've got to grow our economy in ways that make us able to back that off. And so we've got to become more, not only worker-friendly, but business-friendly, again, becoming less dependent on UF, moving towards solar. I would be in favor of rooftop solar. And no, if you have a dwelling within the city of Gainesville, you should not be able to come off the grid, any more than your driveway should be, you know, denied access to the road system. So you've got to stay part of the group. You're part of the community. If you don't want to be part of the community, you can move to somewhere else. But within the context of Gainesville, no, you should be prohibited from coming off the grid. And we've got to work on growing our economy so we can deal with the fact that GRU is going to earn less money as we become more solar-oriented.
Deal. So I want to remind folks just real quick about the two other events that we have coming up. We have the mayoral candidate forum two weeks from tonight. If you'd like to submit questions for that, for consideration, shoot an email to info@laborcoalition.org. We'll be compiling questions for that forum. And then please come and celebrate Medicare and Medicaid's birthday with us at the end of the month, on July 30. I want to invite you, if folks heard things up here that they really liked or really didn't like, stick around, talk with some of these folks a little bit. And I also just want to thank all of you again for joining us, and thank you guys for sitting up here and answering our questions. So thank you so much.
Thanks for your time, Keith.